Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the October 2 regular meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Brian. Changes to the minutes? Dan?
Yeah, a couple. So, page six, Facility Use Policy Paragraph Three. I'd like to propose replacing third sentence with, and Laura, I have this for you. So, Dan Klein would like the community nonprofit fee schedule to reflect the district's actual costs on a per utilization basis. And then, in paragraph four, and Denise, correct me if I have this wrong, but I did go back and look at the video. I'm proposing that it's, we add, Denise Day expressed concern that without knowledge of the district's actual costs, the policy committee would be unable to formulate a new fee schedule. Superintendent Morse replied that the administration would provide those costs to the policy committee.
I don't remember that, was that me?
Hmm?
I don't remember saying that, but if you...
Okay. I mean, I got, I watched the video and it just...
Okay, so then I'll take your word.
The only reason, the only reason I think it's important is it establishes next steps.
Okay, that's fine.
But if...
That's fine.
You know, I'd be open to tabling it if you wanted to review it.
No, that's okay. I trust that you watched the video.
Okay. Other changes? Okay. With those changes, all those in favor approving the minutes, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the minutes are approved. Announcements, commendations, comments from the district? No? From the board? Dr. Morse and I met with Barrett Christina about the gun resolution, trying to encourage him that if the New Hampshire School Boards Association simply feels it's a divisive issue, that they should just let the, let the Assembly decide it as opposed to oppose gun resolutions just because it's a controversial issue. That was the major reason they gave last time. So, you know, essentially if the, if the Board of Directors opposes any restriction of guns in schools, well, that's a reason to oppose our resolution, but if they just feel it's controversial, not that they should either be neutral or take a stand on it. So, that's, that's what we encouraged him to do. He made no promises, we didn't expect any, but he was very open and, you know, professional about hearing that. Yes? Barrett Christina, B-A-R-R-E-T-T, right? Other comments from the...
So, one of our fundamental, basic responsibilities of the school board is policy management. And there's a few things about our policy process that I think it's time that we as a school board, as an entire board, go back and take a comprehensive look at.
Okay.
There are, we have a block of policies that govern the policy management process. There are a couple of those that actually allow approval or suspension of policies with only three affirmative votes, which is not a majority. So, that's contrary to good government. And there's nothing in those that I could find that governs the procedure side of policy. And so, procedure is a, is a powerful part of the policy body. And where, if you look at our history, I think you see that we are inconsistent with how we create, manage, approve, and follow up on changes to procedures without anything in the, without anything in the, in the process overall that really controls how that should operate. So, some of the procedures I think we have today are counter, either in letter or at least in intent, to the policies that they're attached to. And generally speaking, I think that it's something we need to take a step back from and, and taking a look at how we, how we perform this basic function of us, of the school board.
Okay. Thank you. Denise?
And just, just to one, one point, I know we're not going to get into a discussion right now, but I do remember the whole discussion about only three members and it was, it basically was brought up as an emergency kind of situation was, my memory of the discussion, doesn't mean we can't bring it up and talk about it again, but just to, I just want to you to be aware that that has been brought up before. I remember having a discussion around that and why was that? And that, so that's all I want to point out right now is that it, this isn't, your, your observation of it isn't the first time, you know, someone has looked at that.
Okay.
Could I just ask, Michael Wood, specifically, what would you be interested in seeing?
Well, I think if, well, first of all, I think, I mean, this is not on the agenda. So, Tom, if you want to...
Well, why don't you, why don't you comment on it? Then we'll move on, because I don't want to turn this into a discussion item, but go ahead.
Well, so I, I guess, I don't think anything, any action should be able to be taken by the board with less than four members. That's a majority. And if we're going to rely on procedure, then we should have a policy that describes how we're going to create, manage, use procedure.
Okay. Other comments?
So, will that, will, could we put Michael's suggestion on a meeting? Okay, great. I think it's very important. And then I have a comment. The Durham Town Council on Monday will be considering trying to address what we see is underage use of vaping products and nicotine in general. And we know that that's a real emergent situation in our own high school. State law does not allow us to ban the sale of vaping products, but state law does allow us to set the age for possession and purchase and sale of all tobacco products. So, on our agenda on Monday will be to raise the age from 18 to 21 in the town of Durham to sell, purchase, possess vaping products and tobacco. So, I say that both for information, but also I'm sure there'll be people who speak against it and wondering if we as a board want to weigh in on that discussion and provide a statement either for or against such a proposal. So, that's, I know it's not on our agenda tonight, but this is...
What was the timing again?
So, Monday is our first consideration of it. This coming Monday.
Just to follow up on that, we're in the process of organizing a community event to vaping. We are bringing in outside experts and it's scheduled for November 16th, but I'll be getting more information out tomorrow and then a couple more times before that event happens. So, we're having an informational meeting with the community because it is a serious issue and it's a serious health hazard.
So, for the board to take action, we'd have to have something before us tonight. Is that what you're saying?
The, the, Monday will not be, to enact something like that, on Town Council, we go through a public hearing kind of phase.
Okay.
So, it's, so Monday is not a drop deadline, if that's the right term, but it might be something if we as a board would support, we could prepare a statement that in a timely fashion, we could convey is that ordinance is being considered.
So, could we see the ordinance, could, could we see the ordinance then to, or is that...
So, the ordinance is pretty much written right now. It's, it's there.
I mean, not that we would want to, but if we're going to support something, we should see it.
No, no, I agree. I think we do, we have the basic framework, we can, we can do that, too.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So, if it's on the agenda, we should have the actual ordinance before us.
Right. So, maybe on, in our next meeting, perhaps if we're prepared to consider whether we want to, or support it.
Is that going to be timely enough?
I'm sorry?
Is that going to be timely enough? You're saying you're presenting it on Monday. When is the council going to take action? At least, would, at the very, I mean, again, we'd have another two-week cycle before we could even consider it, because you wouldn't take action right after the public hearing, I don't think.
Right. So, will you, so it'll be, so I think we have a board meeting, that first board meeting in, in November will be timely enough if we want to, if we so choose it.
Okay. So, if we can, between now and then, get the ordinance to us, okay?
Yep.
Great. Other comments? Okay, moving on. Assistant Superintendent's report?
Here.
Wait a minute. Okay. A superintendent's report?
So, I met with the Massway staff this morning and we reviewed the process that we used at Mohairmet and updated it for Massway. We anticipate advertising for the new position in January, but between November and January, I'll be having multiple meetings with the search committee. So, in terms of the search committee, it's in your memo. I'd like at least two school board members and then a select person from Lee to be on the committee. So, I'd ask Tom if you would be willing to appoint a school, the school board members to be on that?
Well, I thought that Brian is a logical person because he's the Lee rep. And Kenny's approached me because he has availability during the, the day, which I think you would need to have to do this. So, I would like to nominate those two to be on the Massway Search Committee. Denise?
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay. Seconded by Denise. Discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of those two appointed? Please raise your hand. Seven in favor. One abstention?
Abstained.
Yeah, okay. Seven, and Kenny abstaining, so...
Six, zero, one.
Six, zero, one. So, you two will be the reps.
And does Boyd have any questions about the process? I gave you the memo related to the format. And basically, it's a very inclusive format that would involve the entire Massway faculty if they chose, chose to be involved. A inner circle of interviewers, an outer circle of observers. Everybody would be able to provide feedback. Everybody would be signing confidentiality agreements. The process was incredibly successful at Mohairmet, so I want to replicate it at Massway. Questions?
It just, and I, I like the way that you compose the committee. I think it would be, as far as the two principles, I think it'd be really important to include David because there's such a working relationship between the two elementary, and I assume you were going to do that.
Yeah. David and myself.
Okay.
And then Todd is the meter and greeter. What he does is he brings the candidates through the building while they're waiting for their interview. So, Todd is involved indirectly, but not, and is, but not part of the interview committee.
Questions about that? Good. Good to get that launched.
And then, in the other piece that I wanted to share is we met with Andy Smith, who's the Director of Surveys. And that's not his official title, but that's what he does for the university, along with other things, data analysis. He has done work for us in the past. Tom and I and Jay and Todd met with him and talked about the competency-based grading at the middle school and developing a survey that we could use with the community, with, with teachers and with students on the middle school grading practices. And it was a great meeting. He helped us think through it. Essentially, what we'll do is we'll reach out to various constituency in the district, including this board, and say, give us the questions you have. A 10 to 15 question survey is about $2,500, you know, fully vetted. So, what we, what I thought would be helpful for the board is if you have questions about the grading process, if you'd send those questions to me and then I'll talk to a parent group and I'll talk to the staff and I'll get all these questions, we'll, we'll pass them off to Andy and what he'll do is turn them into questions that are valid for research. So, we want to get that process started. Once we have that information, then we're ready for the next step.
And he also said that, and he said this, the turnaround on this subject like 10, 15 question survey would be pretty fast. And then he, he also said that there'd be a comment section, which he thought was very important, to give nuance and context to some of the answers, so there'd be that. One thing that might be useful is if he wants questions or whether he wants like statements that people agree, disagree. I don't know exactly what form or does it matter, kind of what he wants from us.
He just wanted questions, the way that you would ask them to each other over coffee, and he'll take the questions and transform them into...
Whatever he wants, yeah.
You know, survey questions that are, that are research-based as opposed to just the way we would, we would talk.
So, is there a deadline that he wants from the board? Is there kind of a time? Maybe if Wendy could send out a memo with that, with a timeline for getting those. And then another thing that Andy says is there'd be a reiterative process that he would do. It isn't like we would do that and he would just create it and it would go out. It would come back to us and come back to some of the other constituencies, says, is this, how does this look? You know, so we'll be able to see it, you know, before it goes out. Maybe have a second, second round of revision if we have concerns about it or something's not there.
Is it to be totally online? Is that what Andy proposed or did he want...
He actually, you know, most surveys that he does, he uses postcards and telephone calls and so forth, but because we have access to the entire student database, it's far more effective for us to send the survey out through school messenger to our parents and to do the students during Bobcat time. So, he thinks the response rate using those mechanisms will be far higher than if we had his crew do telephone calls and postcards and all of that. So, that's the process we'll use. We'll, we'll take advantage of our internal system.
Great. And I think that's great. Will there be a survey for both parents and for students? And will the survey be the same or will it be tweaked between the two?
Yeah. It'll be tweaked to the various constituencies with the intent of being able to generate similar direction.
That's wonderful. Thank you for doing that.
Okay. Other questions? So, we'll be seeing, so if Wendy could send out a memo with, with a deadline and just a reminder of, and maybe, maybe the resolution, because we, we had an original resolution that, that kind of identified things that we wanted dealt with and if that could be sent out as well.
We'll do.
Okay?
Yeah. And then the last thing is we're beginning to get a sense of when primary day is. I've sent you a couple of communications from Mr. Regan. And right now, the dot in the calendar is February 11th. If another state tries to jump in front of New Hampshire, our Secretary of State will move that date. But the reason I'm putting it in front of you is that's going to be a very well-attended primary election and we have no mechanism for predicting when it would be when we built the calendar. The town of Lee now uses the school for its elections, just like Durham uses the schools. So, the net result would be that that would be turned into a professional development day as opposed to a student day. I'm not asking you to take action tonight, I'm just want to kind of put that in front of your radar because at some point, Mr. Regan is going to say, or the Secretary of State's going to say, boom, and we'll have to inform the parents and the students of, of that date. But it would be premature for us to do it today. So, just wanted to make sure that was in front of you. Is there any questions related to that?
Yeah. Lee, is Lee using the high school or are they using Massway?
They use Massway.
Massway, okay.
Yeah.
What about March 10? Are we having the deliberative session, I mean, the local vote for, of the school and...
March 10 is at the polls.
But it will be at Massway?
Yeah, yeah. We wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't stop school for that. Generally speaking, we, you know, will be 1,500 to 2,000 people, where the primary could bring in 10,000, you know. I know that Chris Regan is concerned about the primary. He said, I sent you both emails. He seemed to be less concerned about the local elections. He feels like, you know, we can handle those as we typically do. Basically, what happens is the high school quarters off sections of the parking lot so people can get in and out. The police department puts people on duty and we've asked them to put extra people on duty during elections and they have done that. It'll be a little trickier for the Massway school. But basically, what would happen is we, we likely would suspend phys ed for that day, I guess, you know, assuming they're using the gym. And so, the, the only quirky thing about an elementary school is the cafeteria is on the other side of the gym. So, we'll have to problem solve that.
Do you think they'll use this Massway school in the primary, general election, all the other ways to do it?
We checked with them. I had Wendy check with them. Yeah. Yeah. And unless they've changed their mind since this morning, you know, we, they verified they were using it. Yeah. No, that's okay. I mean, it's relatively new that Lee, Lee is using it. No, primary election is what we checked on. March election, I didn't check on, right? Yeah, thank you.
Same.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. So, we'll come back to that.
Would, would we move the deliberative session if the primary moved up a week? If the primary moved up a week to February 4th, that's when we have deliberative session.
So, we're locked into deliberative session by statute. So, we have very little wiggle room there. It's a number of days and it's all calculated by the Secretary of State. So, if the Secretary of State, you know, impacts our deliberative session, I assume the Secretary of State would then give us a new date for deliberative session. So, yeah, that could be a complication, Michael. I haven't thought through it, but it's all in, in the Secretary of State's hands. So, if there's a variation from law, statute, or regulations, it's going to have to be the Secretary of State who makes it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Business administrator?
I have my annual calculation for Barrington tuition rate for next year. The increase is 5.5% and that's mainly due to student support services. That's up about 13%. And as you recall, we added a position to guidance in the high school, so that's impacting that.
So, you have, is it 5.5% or 5.05%? Because then they...
Oh, yeah, it is 5.05. I'm sorry.
Okay.
5.05. It's calculated correctly on the bottom to be 17,641 for the 2021 school year.
Okay.
Any questions?
Do you know the, the rate at Co-Brown and at Dover currently?
I do not. They don't set their rates. We might know Dover, but Co-Brown typically doesn't set their rates until January, I believe. And I'll tell you, historically, they've been about $200 or $300 less than ours.
But ballpark thing?
Ballpark, yeah, right in the same ballpark, yeah.
So, we have a motion to approve this 2020, 2021 tuition rate for Barrington. Denise?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Brian. Further questions for Sue? Hearing none? Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, none opposed. The tuition rate's approved.
Thank you. And I just have one more thing. I'm going to invite Jim Rosicky to come up. He's just going to talk to you about the procedure that we use for building use.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, board. Thanks for having me and thanks for moving me up on the schedule. Before building use, which was asked of me by the policy committee, just to explain the process, just to give you guys the facts, just wanted to bring up really quick what happened over at the middle school as far as the alleged sewage backup. It was a perfect storm. We had, we did have sewage backup in a bathroom and we had a, a backup inside the dishroom in the kitchen. Two totally separate plumbing issues that happened at the exact same time. The kitchen one was actually grease that backfed through and just to build up over time. We do get those, the grease traps maintained and cleaned out twice a year, but this pipe to the dishroom happened to go farther and it was, was not taken care of, so that was the issue. It wasn't raw sewage, after all, inside the kitchen. The other sewage incident was from students flushing fentanyl products in the toilets. So, that was the other, that was the real sewage one inside the restroom, so...
Where in the building was that?
Middle school.
Where in the...
Oh, it's right, it's right next to Jerika's classroom in the lower level. I believe it's 125, right in that section. All right. As far as the building use process goes, when somebody has a request, they are always directed to the website with the ML Scheduled Program. They go through the facilities page and will request an account for a new user. So, it's not just anybody can fictitiously put in, hi, I'm Mickey Mouse, I'm going to put an event over at the high school and get approved. It is, it is entered and then our secretary, Alice, looks over all the information on there and puts them into one of four categories. One, the first category obviously is school and community. The second one is municipality and, and community, sorry. First one is school, community. Second is municipality and, and towns. Third is nonprofit, outside groups, and then the fourth category is outside groups for profit. So, those are the categories. She double checks all that information, obtains 501(c)(3) information if need be, checks addresses and just making sure everything is legit. And then she actually sends back an approval to that organization and that's how organizations, no matter who they are, get set up in the system as a frequent user. Once you're a frequent user and have a, have access, you can then be getting, submitting requisitions for space around the district. And as this person or organization would do, they go on the website, they enter in their organization name, the dates that they want, they're able to search by school and any other information that they can actually put in. On the audit, if they're requesting the auditorium, there's a specific list of parameters that they would have to check off, whether they want lighting or any other equipment in relation to that event. Same thing with gymnasiums. They request tables and chairs. So, there are fields that are required to move yourself through the approval process or to, for submitting that event. Once that's set, click submit, it doesn't even go to the calendar yet. It goes to the very next person in the approval flow. Depending on what building it is, we have certain approvers scheduled and tied to those buildings and those spaces. Typically, that goes through about four different people and then back to Alice, which is the facility secretary, which confirms their, their insurance, all of the charges associated with the event, their liability coverage, and any other outstanding questions before that event gets approved. Anything that looks sketchy or anything that the custodian may need to verify in order for that event to go forward. So, that's the process we go through.
How long does that take from, from, once somebody has an account set up, how long does it take to go through that review process?
It depends, actually. And it could be held up with even one individual. Say the auditorium, for instance, there's a lot of equipment in there. So, I know that Alexander would want to know everything about that event because we have a lot of equipment. Others, like, let's say, for instance, a, a basketball program or a Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts are relatively quick. If the space is open, then they kind of go in. So, sorry, I don't have a specific answer. It's, it's really by the event. But traditionally, we get people through pretty quick just because they, people are generally good about giving us as much advanced notice as possible. Plus, we have to find time for custodial coverage if it's on a weekend and hash out any other type of equipment needs that there be.
Would you do that? Would you, would you make sure you had custodial coverage lined up before you approved the scheduling? Or is that something that happens kind of in parallel depending on how far out it is?
It happens in parallel because the custodian actually is on the approval list for every event.
Ah, okay.
So, they're already thinking like, oh, who's, who's up? Because we have a collective bargaining agreement, so they have to go down a list to see who's available. We do have people that are, that are hungry for some OT, so that's, doesn't seem to be a problem.
Other questions for Jim?
Could you talk a little bit about the accounting side of things? How we invoice, how we... How we invoice, how we, and the other thing is, in terms of, you were saying the categories, it's the school community, meaning district.
Correct.
Programs. Then the towns or municipalities, then for profit, then, I'm sorry, the nonprofit, then for profit. That would just be to establish sort of order of preference in terms of when there's a conflict for a particular space and time, right?
Not only a conflict of that nature, but we also have the fees schedule attached to all those. So as they're going through the process, it will actually already spit out an estimate of what that room fee is going to cost.
So I'm looking at the fee schedule online right now. Is it the same as what's posted or?
It's what's on the guidelines, yes.
Because we don't have, so for example, we don't have on here a municipality slash town count. So what we have is outside groups, nonprofit, outside group, for profit, parent tutoring, and then ORCSD, community nonprofit is in red crossed out. There's nothing underneath it.
Because there's no fees associated with, in groups on the inside.
Groups on the inside?
Meaning like school groups or municipality, there's no, we don't charge fees for those. So it's not associated, attached to that classroom.
The towns would be under that, that column with community nonprofit?
No, they're on the side with the schools. So we don't charge ourselves.
Yeah.
The town only requests to use the Massway School. We don't charge them. The Durham Council wants to use the election process. We don't charge them. The only time we charge anybody is if that says school, well, we wouldn't charge ourselves. But if there was some extraordinary cost associated with a town using the school, we would have to sit down and talk to them about that. But we don't generally charge them.
But my understanding is we've been charging, well, we informed Durham Parks and Rec that they would be charged for, for the Easter egg hunt is the specific example that came to my attention.
That on the field.
It was on the turf.
Yes.
It was on the turf.
Okay. So, okay, so I think we're going to take it up later.
Yeah. Well, not later tonight, but at another meeting because we're still reviewing the fee schedule.
Okay.
Good question.
Yeah, please.
I believe I asked this at policy committee, but just so everyone hears the answer, in terms of when that payment, if the payment is upfront or whether it's charged after the event.
We charge before the event.
Okay.
The only other outlier that may be different from the actual quote or what's generated is custodial fees.
So I did just scroll down. The column, ORCSD, community nonprofit, actually does have some values in it at the bottom for the turf field and the lights in particular, but they're both crossed out. So $150 for the turf field, $75 for the lights, both per hour, but in red crossed out. Is that?
I think that's just inside the system. Again, it's how we built the system as far as the costs associated to whatever category that's in, but it still may not go forward through the whole process. I mean, Alice has the final authority to remove funds or add funds as, as different as we may agree upon.
Sorry, when you say remove funds, what do you mean?
Well, she has the final authority to approve the event and make sure everything is legitimate because if there's a waiver or anything that may be in question, we have that final.
So do you have, does she have, she must have at her disposal some sort of a document that tells her what other outside arrangements are in place outside of the fee schedule?
Correct. And, well, she follows the fee schedule, but a lot of the conversations with other organizations regarding fees happen by email.
Okay.
And.
So I guess my question is, is there a document that details arrangements that the district has made with third parties around fees? She must have something that she can refer to.
She, well, I mean, since she's fairly new, she asks a lot of questions. If an organization requests a waiver or a change of fees, she asks myself, Sue, Dr. Morris. So it's a collective decision.
Okay. I guess what I'm getting at is I'd really like to see any documentation we have on outside Because that's one of the underlying questions that I've asked and I haven't got an answer to.
You're talking about exceptions to the?
Exceptions to the fee schedule, which also hasn't been approved. So we need to take that up.
Well, exceptions to the fee schedule is the waiver. That's me. There's no document. If somebody makes, if somebody makes a request for a waiver, that comes to me.
Right.
Or Sue. But there's no document.
How does Alice keep track of that?
How does she know?
Yeah, there actually is a form.
We, the form that people request on, they'll request a waiver if Sue or I approve it, it's entered onto the form, the same form that they would use to request the facility.
Right. Waiver meeting, no, no fee charged, period. And then there's also been arrangements made where there are flat fees.
Well, that's recent. That has not, that has not been a standing practice. That was a relatively new practice that brought this issue forward.
Okay.
But there hasn't been standing fees before.
Okay.
How long has the current software been in use?
We went live in July of 18. So about a year and a couple months.
And the invoicing is coming out of that also?
It is now.
As of when then?
As of, as of about two months ago.
Oh.
So we're okay?
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. So we have no Student Center report, so move down to discussion items, strategic plan update.
Thank you. As you all know, we adopted a new strategic plan this past school year that runs from 2019 to 2024. The structure of the plan is broken into all the different departments, various schools and grade levels and in all the operational departments. So each, each department has identified a range of goals and they are in the process of working towards achieving those. What I'm going to try to do tonight and kind of continue periodically throughout the course of the next five years is to give you small pieces of where we're at and where we're moving on the strategic plan so we can kind of keep that conversation going. I was kind of looking through it earlier today. By the way, it is on the website now under the school board scroll down menu and it's a, Al, it's a fully indexable document that allows you to jump around to individual goals and so forth. But it is, it is there for everybody to see. But as I was looking for, through it, there are 17 different goals that are outlined over the, academic related goals for us to target over the next five years. So it's a lot of stuff to keep track of. So what I'm going to attempt to do over the course of the next five years is to keep you informed little by little so that we can have these conversations so you'll know that we're making progress. Tonight, I'm going to report to you on work being done on SEL mental health, our MTSS work and also diversity, because those are things early in the year that we've seen some significant progress already. Starting with the SEL mental health piece, as you may be aware, really over the last three years, the elementary schools, we have, we've had an SEL committee that's been looking at the issue of social emotional learning for our kids and trying to determine what's the best route forward. Two years ago, that committee identified a social emotional learning program called Open Circle. Open Circle is an evidence-based social emotional learning program which basically introduces common language and strategies for how you support students largely K through eight is the grade level that it's geared towards in issues relating to their social emotional development, things like problem solving skills, things like, you know, resilience, those kind of things. So two years ago, the committee chose that program as the one that we would adopt at both elementary schools. This fall is the first year both elementary schools are fully implementing Open Circle as the SEL program at both, both schools. Early indications from all staff are very positive. There, it's leading to a lot of conversation, a lot of dialogue. The one piece that we still have left to go and it's scheduled for the November Professional Development Day is to train all non-classroom teachers on, on Open Circle. There's a number of layers of training that we go through to get our, our staff ready. All of our teachers have gone through it, but the last piece that we need to do to be fully implementing is paraprofessionals and non-classroom teachers. So that, that's fully in motion, going well. At grade five, we've had some interest in exploring it. So we've had two grade five teachers do the Open Circle training and are experimenting, piloting it at fifth grade this year with the idea that we will have a conversation about whether or not to continue Open Circle through grade five. One of the reasons that that's really being seriously considered is it's a transitional process. So it's actually bringing the common language with the kids up to the middle school and then from there, the advisory program, which I'll talk about in just a second, kind of takes over for, for kids at the middle school. So that's what's going on with Open Circle.
Can I ask about, so is, is Open Circle something that's integrated into the entire day or is it something that's a breakout from the day with that sort of focus?
It's a little of both. So basically, there are lessons that you do around social emotional learning that are like 15 to 20 minute lessons. So typically, what you'll see at a classroom is they'll have what's called circle time where the kids will come together. There might be some discussion of a particular lesson or activity and then the kids continue with their educational day. So there is a lesson component, but mostly what you see throughout the school is the use of common language and terminology to refer to regulating emotions, things like that. So that when an adult is talking with a student, regardless of who they are, they're using consistent terminology. And it's also coaching kids on how to talk to each other, you know, when, when they're in conflict or having issues that might help them to resolve those. So it's both. It's a, an individual lesson, but it's also an embedded language and kind of thought process. One of the things you may recall from last year, we started using a, an assessment called the DESA, which is a social emotional learning assessment. And that tool is used by teachers and it actually links to Open Circle lessons. So for example, a teacher might go through and assess their students on the DESA and it might say, this group, it might identify a problem solving strategy or a topic that would be relevant based upon that assessment. And then the teachers can simply incorporate that into the, into the classroom. The intent of it is to, number one, provide some consistency to the instruction around it, but most importantly, to be able to be responsive when situations come up so that there's a common sense of how do we discuss issues of conflict and so forth during, during the day? Yes?
How do the school counselors sort of fit into the Open Circle? I mean, they, do they support the teachers in implementing it? And can you maybe just talk a little bit about?
Yes. I mean, certainly, they absolutely are working with teachers to, to facilitate it. They, they go through the same training that the classroom teachers do. Certainly in their counseling sessions as they're, they're talking with kids, they're using similar common language. Both of our elementary counselors are in classrooms a lot doing other important lessons that they do to support kids and, and they're keeping, they're aware of the Open Circle curriculum and how those two things can go together. So, so yes, they're fully, fully engaged as well as the school psychologists. In fact, the school psychologists are largely sort of appoint people at both buildings to facilitate the process. So at the middle and high school level, they're, both, both have advisory programs that are constantly sort of a, a work in progress, kind of looking at what are the issues that kids are facing? I heard the topic of vaping, for example, coming up and certainly that's going to be a topic that's going to find its way into some advisory lessons and so forth. Beyond that, both schools have building committees that are looking at schoolwide themes and topics that they see are important for kids to be able to tackle. An example, I know the Sustainability Curriculum Committee has been talking a lot about how to embed some lessons around sustainability into the middle school environment and some of those sustainability lessons are going to come to kids via the advisory time. The thought really is that you're trying to use advisory as an opportunity for a child to really get to know well a single adult and have that adult sort of help facilitate and coach them through the various circumstances that, that come up through the course of their day and to really get to know them. At the high school level, the advisor actually follows the kids for all four years. So they really get to know them well and they can, can really support them. But again, the curriculum is much more needs based around what are the topics that we need to make sure to address. There are common themes that we know every year we need to address, you know, certainly things around coaching through course signups, coaching kids through the various stressed, stressful times of the year, that kind of thing. But then there are always topics that come up such as, like I said, vaping when, when issues around diversity come up. Those topics find their way more and more into the advisory curriculum. Beyond the advisory program at the two building levels, there's the District Mental Health Committee continues to meet. You may recall, a lot of work was done over the last few years around the shape assessment. The intent of that was to really take a look at the supports we have in place and continuously look to make adjustments to how we're providing programming. One of the things that was very specific that came out of that last year was the addition of another counselor at the high school and also that sort of triage model of having a counselor always available in the counseling office when kids come in in need of support. I don't know if any of you had a chance to see, there was a really great article in the Boston Globe about a month ago about the changes in counseling at the high school level in particular, at the high school level largely because the move from college counseling to a more of a full service sort of approach. Oyster has been moving in that direction for many years, but the role of counselors has really broadened pretty significantly. And so the addition of a counselor was really geared towards making sure we could always have someone available for kids that are in crisis, but at the same time, making sure we're staffed well enough so that kids were getting adequate support for all of the traditional things that kids have, turn to their counselor for, such as college applications and course signups and, and any of the other kind of day-to-day issues that come up in their lives. So that's kind of broadly is where we're at with regards to the SEL goal. Happy to answer any questions about that beyond?
Just the one thing that I raised at the last meeting with the tremendous use of nursing services at the high school, is that incorporated in the work that you're doing or the work of the wellness committee as well as that?
Well, the mental health committee is actually a subgroup of the wellness committee. So they're, they're all interconnected. So we periodically meet all groups, kind of sharing out what's going on with regards to, the nurses are actively involved in all of those components. So yes, they're involved in the mental health committee, but they're also involved in the District Wellness Committee.
Okay. So it's all connected?
Yeah, very much so. We're very, the structure we're trying to use is a kind of umbrella group that has everything reporting into it. So there's a District Wellness Committee, but then there are subgroups that are analyzing things and Al's certainly been involved.
Yeah, I mean, it's, Ron, it's kind of a spoiler alert because I was going to do it at my committee update, but I actually met yesterday at the high school with the nurse and with Jesse Morrell and somehow I ended up on the data thing. And what we were really doing with that, that was the sleep survey part. And we were talking yesterday about the sleep survey, which has gone on for like three years. We're like, kind of like, you know, is that, I mean, just when people go to bed and when people get up, is that really what we're asking? And one of the things, since you brought the nurse, that we were, wanted to collect data, which we can collect data and kind of overlay it with that three-year sleep study, was the usage of the school nurse. I think that's an important element because it gives you kind of a better, we wanted to incorporate not only when they go to bed and when they wake up, also we wanted to, we're reaching out to try to grab the homework survey, throw that on there and then the nurse survey. Because it'll give you a kind of a better idea of what's happening in the students' lives. So that's.
Yeah. And hopefully, you know, those discussions around that data will motivate other conversations which will lead to looking at the services we're providing and how we're, how we're meeting student needs.
So Al, as you're doing that, I would suggest you also collect data from the counseling office.
Okay.
Because that would be the next dimension. Yeah. I mean, again, so this is like I'm ruining my like thing, but we, what we really were trying to do is to, to give you, I mean, when I looked at it, I was like, what are we really trying to accomplish with this sleep study? And what, it's hard because not only do we change the start time, but we've changed the school schedule. So we really, what we're really looking, I think, is did we make it more humane for students is what we're trying to ask. And so we, we, we have the sleep data, we have the homework data, we can grab the, the nurse's data. And then I think what we're really looking to do is, okay, we'll present that, what are the next questions we're really trying to ask? And so we're going to. And so we're going to meet in two weeks to really formulate that, and so that when we come forward and do a presentation of the data, we can really kind of focus on, all right, this is what we've done last, what are we looking for? And I think that'll be what our presentation is.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that's great, trying to put all that together, getting that kind of thing. And part of what I think might be important, and I think what you're working on is incredibly complex, incredibly difficult, and there's really, there's no roadmap, you know, and we're trying to figure it out, and we're really trying to do what's best for our kids. One thing that I would suggest considering, and I don't know if it's the right idea, and you could survey people to death, but I think kind of a model has been created with the advisories, your idea about having one adult who really gets to know kids and the kids know that adult, that's all incredibly positive. It might be worth checking in with our students and to see if we're going in the right direction. And it's, because it's so complex, and we're devising a system, and I can't think of a better system. I think you're doing a great job, but just to get that gut check, that we're on the right path, this is meaningful, as opposed to advisory is great, because I don't have a class then, and it's a time I could space out. So just to kind of get?
I hear you.
That positive feedback.
I think it's funny, because it's exactly what we were saying yesterday when we did all the data. What we're really trying to show is, are we on the right path? And where do we need, where are the areas that we need to improve upon? And so, I mean, when we were doing the data, there was a couple of questions that are on the sleep survey that really are more mental health-oriented, like, how do I feel about myself kind of things? And so what we were struggling with is like, as we're looking, you know, Jesse's like, well, I'm a data scientist, and it's like, we have to reach a point where we present the data and then we can hand off to the mental health component and let them, I mean, that's more of like their survey stuff and their data, what they're finding, so that, how those two pieces fit together.
Yeah. I would be remiss if I didn't say, I know Jesse hates it when we call it the sleep survey, because she sees it as much more of an overall health survey, is really what it is. So just to say that. So moving on to the next category, which is MTSS. One of the things we tried to do with the strategic plan this time is we wanted to make sure there were overarching themes that sort of found their way through all of the different schools in the district. So within the strategic plan, the two elementary schools, the middle school and the high school all have an MTSS goal. MTSS is Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. Basically, what the intent is to try to create a systematic approach to looking at information about students, whether it's academic, behavioral, however, to make sure that we are meeting the needs of those students. The things that, on the academic side of the equation, the things that you're seeing happening at the different levels. At the elementary school, they have reworked their master schedule to create grade-level team time, so that teachers at grade levels have the opportunity to talk and share information and work with each other to make sure their strategies are in line. In addition to that, there's been a lot of work done to get our curriculum documents in line, particularly around literacy instruction. Last two years, there's been a really concerted effort to try to get our curriculum maps that really work and are supportive of our kids. Number one, to make sure that students are learning what we want them to learn at each point along the way, but also so that we can utilize the tutors and support people well, so that they can maximize the efficiency of their time. Because one of the struggles you get into when you have wonderful people, which we do have lots of them, that are working in tutors and case management roles, if they have to spend significant time sort of sorting out, well, what are they doing in this first grade classroom, as opposed to what should first graders be able to do, it makes it harder for them to do that. So there's been a lot of conversation around that. So at both schools, they're really, really looking at, how do we systematize? And I use the word system, I don't want you to think of it as a cold word, it's more just thinking up big picture, so that we make sure that all the pieces are in place. So at the most micro level, kids and their teachers are able to focus on what they need to focus on, and kids can learn. So in the, sort of the next big thing, we're beginning to look at, at the elementary levels. And this is actually, in the next month, I think I'm on the agenda for the November 20th meeting to talk to you about the World Language Committee and kind of give you some indication there. One of the things you're going to hear about is master schedule and time, and I know, Al, that's a pet issue of yours, you know, to get us to really think about that, but one of the things we have to do is think about priorities and what's going to be the priority at any given time, and that's true about any schedule building. And so when we think master schedule, it's like, what are the priorities for our kids? And how do we make sure those things happen every day? So there's been a lot of talk about, how much time do we want to make sure kids have for math instruction? How much time do we want to make sure they have for literacy instruction? How much time do we want to make sure they're having for writing and social studies and science? And when you start breaking it out about all these things, you realize, wow, we don't have enough time in our day. So I just want to put that out there, that will likely be a conversation that we will talk about as time goes on. So that's the focus at the elementary grades. At the middle and high school level, you've heard the term Bobcat Time and Flex Time being two concepts that are actively being used at both schools. Those are both directly related to MTSS Systems of Support. What that means is teachers are working to identify, what are the data points that we want to collect on students, so that we can make sure during those relearning times, Bobcat and Flex, that we're focused on the right things? That students who need extra help in math are getting that. For students who are really exceptional readers, they're getting an opportunity to expand their reading skill. So that's where the focus is at the, at the two, at middle and the high school. Technologically, we've added a new tool this year, which we're just getting started using through our Power School Student Information System. There is a, an MTS, MTSS Tracker system, which allows us, when we decide on a particular strategy or intervention we're going to use with students, it allows us to log it, identify the students we're using that strategy with, and then track it over time. Because one of the things that is challenging when you're trying to do things in a fairly systematic way is, we did this, but how do we know it worked? And so if you do the same strategy over and over again, and you get the same result, and it's not the one you're looking for, it's time to try a new strategy. And so one of the, that's a tool that our MTSS teams are beginning to dabble with and to do some tech training with that, and to hopefully get to the point where we're really proficient at tracking that kind of thing. So that's sort of the MTSS academic piece. Any questions about that? Okay, and then the last one I wanted to report on tonight is just our work around diversity. As you are aware, we're working with New Hampshire Listens. They really, they actually work with us very heavily over the last few years, and they actually helped us to draft the strategic goals that we're focused on. We have goals regarding curriculum review, looking at co-curricular programs, looking at staffing, looking at, you know, overall school climate and environment. What we've done so far this year, we have, just like last year, the entire staff, every staff member in the district has had a training around diversity with New Hampshire Listens. What we've found is, over the course of the last couple of years, is initially, the trainings we were doing were more general in focus, and now what's happening is people are asking more specific questions. And so what we're doing is really getting into, how does this play out in the classroom? What does this mean to you as a classroom teacher when you're making a decision about instruction? How does this play out? How does this play out in terms of the books you choose when you teach a lesson? How does this play out in terms of the language you use when you talk to kids? So we're really starting to get to there. In addition to that, we had, we have a course that is being offered again this year through New Hampshire Listens on equity and inclusion in the classroom, and a number of our staff are doing that. It's really similar to the action research concept that Chris Hall did with his sabbatical, but teachers identify diversity, equity, and inclusion-related issues that they want to look into and develop solutions, and then they share those with their colleagues. And there's been a lot of great stuff that's happened as regard, in regards to that. So we're really very much at the front edge of that. I think we acknowledge that we have a lot of work to do, but I think one of the things that's been really impressive is how engaged our staff are in having these challenging conversations, because some of it is actually reflecting on yourself and realizing, you know what? Maybe I need to do some search here and maybe approach things differently. And I think that's been one of the most rewarding parts of this. Kind of a big picture in terms of our, is staffing. We also are looking at ways to broaden our applicant pool when we hire new staff. Last year, we were, we added Schoology and IRT, the Institute for Recruitment of Teachers, to the kind of pool of things that we were advertising and recruiting in. And we did get some response to that. One of the things that we're, we're, we're struggling with, one of the things that we're struggling with is, I wasn't distracted by that, I just want to say, laser-focused the whole time. But one of the things that we're struggling with is, we've tried some different things, but it's awfully hard when you're trying to broaden this like national applicant pool, like bringing in all these candidates. How do you know that you got in front of people? And how do you know they saw it and that it influenced them in a decision? So where, there's actually, and I don't have the name in front of me, but Teresa Proya has been really great about working on this. She's working with a company that has a platform that we may be able to use, that is really specifically geared towards this, which will also help us track data and to be able to say, you know, did we actually get this in front of people who are from a variety of diverse cultures, that whether they applied or not, did they see it? I mean, that's really the first step, is making sure we're known and that kind of thing. So that's diversity, or at least a piece of it. Any questions about that?
I had a question, whether it might be interesting, we'll just throw this out, is one of the things you might look for is people who are bilingual, whether that could be a qualification that you might, that might draw Hispanic applicants. And if you're looking at language, and, you know, if somebody can shift between Spanish and English, for example, that could be a real asset.
Absolutely.
And particularly if you're focused on language, you know, so, and it might also draw from, you know, that pool, because then you're kind of stating that as a great, you know, at least one of the things you might be looking for.
Absolutely, that's a, that's a great thought. I hadn't thought of it, but that actually is, it's an excellent thought, and actually we did, we did hire one of our teachers this year is bilingual at, or, I was told by our language teachers that the term bilingual is not the way to, multilingual, I guess they don't, that's not the right term. But anyway, regardless, we have, we do have one teacher that we hired that is multilingual, speaks two languages, so. Our world language teachers are great people, but they have their opinions, and I just want to be.
Well, it could be they can speak three languages.
It's true. It's true. All right.
Well, I think, I think the term bilingual has a definition that is narrower than what you actually mean in this case.
Exactly, yeah.
In general, I really appreciate the narrative that you've provided here and taken a look at the strategic plan as we go along. I appreciate the way you're breaking it up over the course of the year, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think when we look at additional sections, it'd be helpful to take a look at the specific action items out of the plan with each of these, you know, in addition to the narrative, and say, all right, are we, what are we doing in each of these areas?
Yes, and I would, just as a point of reference, as you look at, if you go through the strategic plan, I was looking at it earlier, 195 pages long, and each, each goal has dozens of actionable items on it. So just, when I, I can, I can, it's just a lot of actionable items, but you're absolutely right that I could connect it more directly to what the focus of those items are. Yep, okay. Any other thoughts, questions?
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, moving to board action items, we're down to the policy, the two, three policies. Denise, you want to get us going on this?
Sure. We'll start with policy JLIe, Student Automobile Use. And that one, really, there was nothing, it was just not, we just had overlooked the approval of it before it got pulled with the searches of student automobiles, policy JIHB, but there really wasn't anything in it, which I'm trying to find it right now, that, thank you, I should just look on my computer, too. So anyway, the only thing, it references GIHB, which is really the policy that we had some discussion around. So JLIe is just student automobile use, and I, so I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, I think we'll just take these individually, because I really think there's going to be different discussions around each one, but I'd like to make a motion to approve policy JLIe, Student Automobile Use for first read.
Moved by Denise, is there a second? Second by Brian. So this presupposes that the searches policy is pretty much as it's stated, right?
Well, it, all it is, is it, whatever the searches policy is, is, you know, it references it, but you know what I'm saying, it doesn't say what's in JIHB, it just says that we're going to go ahead and follow JIHB. So this, in other words, this wasn't the policy that was controversial in any way.
I would want to hold off, I would want to hold off, because for, says students should be aware that any vehicle that they drive to school may be subject to searches provided by board policy JIHB. So I think we should do JIHB before we do this particular policy.
The thing is, is that whatever, whatever happens around search, that's what, the name of this policy is Searches of Student Automobile Policy. So I don't, I don't see any, I guess, conflict or anything around.
Well, the conflict is, depending on what JHIB says, it will influence how we vote on this particular policy.
But it doesn't say how the search is going to happen.
Right, but it's, but if I don't agree with JIHB, I'm not going to agree with this one either, so that's, that's the only reason.
All right.
I would want to.
All right, well, then I'll just withdraw my motion at this time then, and we'll just move ahead to policy, we'll go, we'll just, we'll set aside use of school buildings and facilities for right now, and go down to policy JIHB, which is Searches of Student Automobiles on School Property. I will say that we had an extensive discussion around this at the policy committee meeting, and in the end, you know, we took a vote on the wording of this, and just basically agreed to bring it, bring it as reflected here to the full board for approval. So I would like to go ahead and just make a motion to be able to start that discussion of policy JIHB as presented for, which is Searches of Student Automobiles on School Property for first read.
Moved by Denise, is there a second? Second by Brian, okay, it's on the table.
Do you want me to start, or do you want to start, Ken?
You could start if you would like, Ken, that's.
So this is a conversation that Ken and I have had for the better part of a year now, and, you know, it's one of those things where two people can disagree and still like each other in the end, so it's not like it's causing any personal animus. The issue around the searches for student automobiles really breaks down to school administration or police. And school administration's level of search is much lower than a police officer's. Ours is reasonable suspicion, and a police officer's is probable cause. So reasonable suspicion is a much lower standard, it's no different than asking a student to empty their backpack or look in a locker, and so when the student brings their car on school property, they know it's subject to search, just like their backpack or a locker. So it's not a legal process, and so it provides an administrator a way of interacting with a student without necessarily bringing in law enforcement. Now, if the administrator finds something that's illegal, they're obligated to report it to the police, but it may just be one of those situations where a conversation with an administrator resolves the issue, it's not an illegal issue, it's just something that is a violation of school rules. A police officer, probable cause means that they have more than a reasonable suspicion that something's in a person's car, and so it's a much higher standard. And it's not just because they feel like they want to do it, they actually have to have a legal basis to do the search. So there's a distinction between reasonable suspicion and probable cause, that's a really important distinction in terms of managing a schoolhouse of 850 students and probably 200 drivers. And so we just want to make sure the students know that, you know, they have to treat their car as they do their locker, as they do their backpack, knowing that it's an extension of, of the school when it's on school property.
Can I just ask, can I just ask a question? So if the super, if the principal suspects there might be drug paraphernalia, which you can't have if you're under. can't have if you're under 18, that's, it's illegal by understanding.
Right.
Okay. She searches the car, finds drug paraphernalia. The student is 17.
Or, or, not even an age group, drug paraphernalia is illegal no matter the age, so.
Well, the ordinance that the council is considering related to.
Well, let me just, for the sake of argument, okay? So she is that, if she finds something illegal, she is obligated to report it to the police. So there's no protection, so the effect would be the same thing as if the police found it. Is that correct?
Except there was a lower threshold for her.
For the search, but for the, for the discovery, the effect would be the same.
Yeah, so she's obligated to report illegal activities to the police. That's part of her obligation.
Okay. So sorry, Kenny, go ahead.
No, I, I think, but Tom, I think, Tom, you made something that concerns me, that, that point. And we actually have another policy in place, J I C H, which says that any, anytime anything illegal is found, the authorities need to be informed. So when I first heard of this policy, what I heard was the hope of this policy was not to kind of immerse a student in the legal system for a minor infraction.
Correct.
But really, that's not the case because any sort of finding that is illegal requires police notification. And, and if we're talking about situations that to me are very alarming, and those alarming situations are, we're feeling that a student might be not just doing something that's harmful to themselves, but harmful to our school community, which would be dealing drugs, having a weapon. To me, if we're raising to that threshold, that's a threshold, I think we need to take it to a higher level and really handle it with the authority that the legal system has. If we're worried that there's a kid that's come to school drunk and we're worried about that kid, do we want to then immerse them in a legal system? And if we find a pint of vodka in the car and they're 17, we do. Or do we want to instead not go down that route and instead really deal with it through kind of the mental health sort of framework that we're really trying to develop in having a reach out with appropriate people and to try to have an honest conversation with somebody saying, we're worried about you. And we're worried, and this is why we're worried. And how could we help you? And we don't want to get you in trouble and we want you to succeed in school. So I see this policy actually being contradictory to what we really want, which is to help students in need, as well as to protect our general student body. Because if there's something like a weapon or a quantity of drugs that's dealing, we certainly don't want that around. So I, I'm, there are a lot of, and I'm sorry to go on. The policy, to me, the whole point of policy is to move us above individual discretion. Policy, to me, sets standards that we all follow irregardless of personality. And this policy, to me, doesn't do that because what is the threshold for doing a search? And, and in the kind of language in our policy, it, all it takes is one person to go to the principal, say, I, I think something might be going on. And then the wording even says that the principal shall go forward, which to me is, there's no discretion even on the part of the principal.
Says shall have the discretion.
Yeah, that's discretion to engage the police. But earlier on, it, it talks about how the principal has to go forward and do that. So there's just so many aspects of this policy that seem very both random and wrong. And I, I don't think we, we need a policy like this.
Denise?
Okay, so the, I see where you're saying, Kenny, that, but it says drugs, drug paraphernalia or weapons, specifically those things that.
No, so the sentence above it, not in blue, but in the event that an employee at the school district has reason to believe, dot, dot, dot.
Drugs, drug paraphernalia or weapons.
Right, right. That employee will inform the building principal, who will then conduct a search. It doesn't say who may.
Right, those three things, though. So there could be a whole bunch of other possible things that don't fall into that category.
Which are?
It says drugs, so I don't know that tobacco products would be considered in there or not. But the thing, and Brian, I'd like you to correct me if you're, if I'm wrong in understanding this, but part of the issue is, for example, there's a rumor that somebody has something in their car. That would not, and this is my understanding and why I'm, why I'm disagreeing basically with Kenny is that if there's a rumor, that would not rise to the standard of probable cause. So there could be a rumor someone has a weapon in the car and the police could not, might not be able to conduct the search. That's very concerning to me that somebody could have a weapon in their car and the principal's hands would be tied.
Well, they're not tied because if they bring it to law enforcement, it's not like that situation is going to unfold without anybody looking at it. The police wouldn't search the cause, the car unless they had a warrant. But it doesn't mean that they couldn't observe the car and observe the student. It's not like you say, oh, never mind. That, that situation is so covered. If you feel that there is a situation, if we feel someone has a bomb in the car, right? Do we want Suzanne to go in and, and check and see if there's a bomb in the car? She'd get the police, and would the police sit there and let students congregate around the car if they thought there was a bomb in the car? They would put the car under observation, they'd put the student under observation, and then they would go through the correct legal channels until the situation was resolved in a safe manner. So we don't want Suzanne poking her head in a car that we think might have weapons in it. That's, what training does she have to?
Well, this is where the discretion comes in. I very much have confidence that she has enough wherewithal to know where she should be putting her head and where not. I mean, the fact that you, that we have to determine or micromanage what she does is completely inappropriate.
It is micromanaged in the policy because.
No.
Because if the gym teacher goes to Suzanne and says, hey Suzanne, I think that that person might have drugs in the car, Suzanne has no choice. She has to search the car. That's what the policy says.
First thing they, they do is they pull a student aside and they say, what's going on?
That's not in the policy.
Doesn't have to be in the policy. Doesn't have to be in the policy.
This is what the policy says.
Okay, I understand that.
Okay, okay. Brian, you got the floor.
You got the floor.
Okay.
I would like clarification about, in example, I really would like clarification. I understand this. So if there's a rumor about a weapon and we had the standard of probable cause, is there a scenario where we would just have to let that student go, basically?
No, absolutely not. You wouldn't if there's a weapon involved.
Even if it was, if it was just a rumor, the police would be able to get.
That, I'm not going to tell Suzanne how to do her job, but I very much think she would, she would contact the SRO and get them involved at that point.
Would they be, but would they, based on a rumor, does that meet the standard? And if it doesn't, what happens? I guess that's my question. What happens?
No, rumor, rumor would not, would not fulfill probable cause.
What's that?
A rumor would not fulfill probable.
So that's my question. So what happens in that scenario? It doesn't meet the standard, so what, what are the options at that point?
She can go search the car if she wants to, but I very much doubt.
She, she wouldn't be able to search the car, though, if we adopt Kenny's. That's my point.
Exactly.
My point is that if we adopt the policy where it would have to only be a police search, she would not have that option. That's my question.
She, she would talk to the SRO.
But here's the thing.
Who would then take management.
Searching a car with a weapon in it, okay? The weapon's not going to reach out and shoot her, okay? Weapon has to be in the hand of somebody to do that. If there's nobody in the car, I'm not concerned. Okay? She finds a weapon, she contacts the police. Okay? But don't, I don't want anyone to be under the impression that this is a problem in the school, that we have people bringing weapons to school.
No, no.
I know, but this is, probably happens once every 10 years, if anything, and it's probably during hunting season of all times. But I, the idea that, you know, that Suzanne doesn't know how to search a car or do anything else is completely ludicrous. And the fact that we were going to micromanage her and tell her exactly what she can and can't do is completely inappropriate. And I think it's beyond our scope of our authority as a school board.
Well, I'm sorry that you find my ideas ludicrous, but then again, we do tell our administrators what to do and what not to do in many instances, and that's why we have policy, so.
We don't tell administrators. We have, we have.
I would like to just call the vote because I think we know what the issue is. And we, we went through this in policy, we went through it in policy once, we went through it in policy twice, we went through it to the board once, we're going through it to the board twice. People know where they stand. I'd just like to have a vote.
No one else has commented. I don't know where they stand.
Right.
Well, people, further discussion?
So just a, a point in general about policies. One of the things that troubles me a little is when we talk about individuals in the context of a policy. Suzanne, who I think we all trust and respect, frankly, is irrelevant because we have to, when we formulate a policy, it should, it should stand on its own and work just as effectively if Suzanne were gone tomorrow. So, you know, if it's a, this works because we trust Suzanne, then to me, that's not a sufficient policy. And I, I do, I do have a lot of concerns about an educator slash administrator performing a task that is best done by a trained law enforcement personnel. You know, there's any number of scenarios that, you know, is just, I, I would like to think that her skill set or a principal's skill set is better suited to, you know, relaying the concern and the investigation to the SRO or to the police to conduct that. And I understand the threshold issue, but, you know, I guess I wonder what prompted us to want to expand this scope.
So this is a common policy across the country. This isn't unique to Oyster River. Reasonable suspicion for administrators to address concerns of the student body, particularly at a high school level, it's common practice. This isn't unique to us. And I, I appreciate your point in relation to it being Suzanne. This isn't about Suzanne. This is about administration having the authority to do a search at a much lower threshold than police would. I have the same concern that Denise has and, you know, and it's, and Kenny and I have had this conversation as well. You know, if we, if we can't act at a lower level on rumor, then we're creating a very vulnerable atmosphere at the high school. If everything has to rise to the level of probable cause, then Suzanne administration will have a much more difficult road hoe in terms of maintaining a semblance of safety in the building. So, you know, apparent calls or anonymous emails put in our email box and Suzanne is told that, you know, something untoward is happening and it, and it happens to be in the vehicle, whatever it is. She can just ask the student to open the door and say, hey, I've got this rumor. End of story. Maybe it's just rumor and it's over. When we bring police into it, I think it's much more traumatizing. And so we, we would have to have a lot more than a rumor that something potentially dangerous is happening, maybe a weapon. We would be completely immobilized to even check it out.
But Jim, what you're saying there is that we would use rumor to get people involved in the legal system.
No, that's what I'm saying, the opposite of that, Ken.
Because if you find something, if it's a rumor and the rumor is true, the kid's in the legal system. And I think we want a higher threshold to get, we want to help kids. We don't want to get them in trouble. And a rumor, and if we find that that kid has two joints in his car, is that really detrimental to our student body as a whole? No. Is there a problem with that kid? Yes. But when we find two joints in that kid's car, that kid is now in the legal system. And I think we want to avoid that. I, I get your perspective.
Okay.
And I, we don't need to put rumors to rest. We need to help kids.
And you know I agree with that 110%.
I, I know, and that's why.
Yeah, we're on the same page when it comes to that issue.
That's why I, I don't understand why you don't agree with me. Because we are on the same page.
Okay. Dan?
And I, I think it was asked before, but I don't remember the answer. Obviously, we have a significant number of our parking spaces that are not on school grounds.
Yep.
How does this policy work when, I believe those spaces are technically on town property?
They are, but they're assigned to the school and, and they're assigned to the students and so they come under the extension of the school.
Okay. And that's a, and how, and just, how is that established in a legal sense? Is that a, is that an agreement with the town or?
You know, it's a, I would say it's a gentleman's agreement between the town. They, they're not controlling those parking spaces, we are. And so it might if a student parked there, they're getting permission from the school.
So I guess, so just in a, in a, I don't know, just the scenario, would, would, would a student have a, any sort of legal case to make in terms of an illegal search if their car were not physically on school grounds?
Well, it's not an illegal search if the administration does it because of reasonable suspicion, but it's a legal search if the police do it and they don't have probable cause.
So if the principal were to search a student's car that was parked downtown?
We don't have any authority.
Right. But I guess I, it makes me a little nervous that a gentleman's agreement is the basis upon which we extend this.
I mean, we can do something formal. The, the town of Durham will, will cooperate, I'm confident, in at least assigning those, not necessarily to this policy, but assigning those spaces formally. We do have an agreement with the, the chief of police related to police services and so forth, and we can add that, but it's never been an issue.
Could you refer to?
There are signs up and down Code Drive placed there by the town of Durham stating that between the hours of, I think it's eight and three o'clock, those are school district spots. So it's, that's officially the town's declaring that as a school district parking area.
But there's no agreement.
But it's also part of the agreement that the student signed. The R document very clearly says, you know, in the guidelines, in the R document, it's pretty clear.
Okay.
So we're ready to vote on this for first read?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Two in favor. All those opposed, please raise your hand.
So opposed to the, for really?
Five opposed. So this is not approved for, for first read, which makes, I think, the other, other one moot as well.
No, the other one is still just refers to.
Yeah, that's just the use of a policy. It goes back to Kenny wanted to have this one out so he would know what it was referencing. So if this one isn't approved, then it's referenced, that reference would have to leave the use of automobiles.
We would strike four from the first policy.
No, because it's still relevant to a search. It's just the search has to be a police, is what we're saying now. So there's still a search of the car, it's just the police have to do it.
It has to be probable cause.
Yes.
And the police have to do it. That basically says that administrators cannot search a car at all, is what we're saying.
I disagree with that interpretation.
No, that's what we just said.
No, no, we didn't. What we said is we did not approve the policy for first read. There's still a policy J I H B that exists that was approved in 2014 that we haven't changed. We specifically just decided not to change it.
No, no, no. We just voted for it for Kenny's way.
No, we didn't.
Yes, we did because you're taking off the part that says the principal can search it. You just voted for the principal not to be able to search it.
I disagree with your interpretation.
No, we, existing policy stays.
Yes. Would you like me to read from the existing policy?
Yeah.
In the event that an employee of the school district has reason to believe that drugs, drug paraphernalia or weapons are present in a student's automobile, the employee will inform the building principal, who will then conduct a search of the automobile. That is the current policy.
But the only thing we added to the change was the principal shall have the discretion. That's, it doesn't, it's, it's not what you think. And we're going to have to go back. We're going to have to go back to the original policy.
All I'm doing is reading what the policy is today.
All right.
Which we did not change.
We did not delete.
We did not delete.
We just did not approve the change.
That's not the way I'm reading this whatsoever, so I think we're going to have to start over again with the vote. Because the way, what we're bringing forward, no, what we are bringing forward, that what Kenny wanted to do was strike it out completely. He wanted to strike the whole policy.
No, no, I didn't. I wanted to rewrite the policy.
But that wasn't the motion.
But we weren't voting on Kenny's motion.
But we were, we were voting, we were voting.
Your motion, actually.
The vote was to approve it for first read.
Right, but the only change we made to the policy was to clarify that she has the discretion. But the only change we made to the policy was to clarify that she has the discretion as opposed to having to do the, having to engage the police for sure.
Which doesn't go through, because it wasn't passed for first read, so it defaults back to the policy that's in effect.
No, we, forget it. I just, then I wanted to redo the vote, because I'm not agreeing with Kenny, and that's not what I was voting for.
But what you're voting for, the vote was actually for first read for a change in the policy. If you don't bring forward the change in policy, because it doesn't go to first read, it automatically defaults back to what the policy is.
Well, then, I still would like to redo the vote, because then, it makes it look like I am against it when I'm not.
No, you voted for it.
A no vote does not delete the current policy.
I would like to withdraw, I would like to start again, because I don't want my vote to be reflecting what I'm not, isn't my understanding of what we just voted for. I'm sorry. We just have to redo this vote. Or I'm going to make another motion to redo it.
We consider?
I would, no, because I don't want it to reflect like I'm agreeing, because I'm not agreeing with Kenny.
You're not. You made a motion to approve the policy, and you voted to approve it. So, you, that's what your vote was, Denise.
Yeah.
I didn't make a motion, and I didn't say to strike the policy.
We agreed.
I voted against the policy, you voted for the policy.
We agreed to approve the policy with the blue in there.
Yeah.
That's how I interpreted what we did. Me and you are going to the voted in the affirmative, who we voted for as it is here in the backup with the blue line put in there with the discretion.
I know, but I feel like it's not clear. I really don't feel like it's, I just feel like it's, my vote is not going to reflect.
Could I make a suggestion? What I would suggest is that policy J.I.H.B. go back to the policy committee, well, no, because it's going to, I think as a board, we need to reconsider policy J.I.H.B. if it goes to policy from the votes on the table, it's going to come back the same way.
I'm going to make a new motion. I'm going to make a new motion that I would like to, I would like to motion to accept policy J.I.H.B. for first read, striking, just striking, the principal designated shall have the discretion to engage the police in the search. So, just striking that one sentence, and I'd like to motion to approve that for first read.
That would clarify the issue, right?
Right.
That would clarify, right?
That would bring it back to what the policy originally said.
So, and so the consequences of the vote, if we approve the policy, it will be in place for first read without the blue?
Yes.
But if we disagree with it, the policy is eliminated?
No.
No, what happens?
It stays as it is.
So, how?
This motion doesn't do anything.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
That's exactly what I was trying to clarify.
I don't want my vote to reflect that I somehow disagree with an administrator being able to search the car. And I feel like that's what it does.
It doesn't, Denise. You voted in the affirmative.
You're right there, Denise. Your vote does say that.
Yeah.
You're saying that you disagreed with, with the not approving the policy as it was written. So, it's kind of a double negative. So, you and Brian are absolutely correct in your vote. You're saying we don't support this without the blue.
No, I, I really just want to go back to this drawing board, because I just don't feel like it.
So, you have a motion on the table? Did you have a second? Can we just move it along?
Yes, okay. So, I just, right. So, I just motioned that we basically adopt the policy J.I.H.B. as originally written, without the blue.
That allows the principal to have the authority to do the search.
Which they already have.
Which they have by policy, so you'd restrict. Her motion would strip that.
No, all mine would do is take out the blue sentence. That's all it would do. It just takes out the blue sentence. In for, so, it still gives the principal, who will then conduct the search of the automobile. The only reason we inserted the blue was to sort of clarify it, but it obviously didn't do that. It kind of muddied the waters. So, I would just like, as my motion is, I made a motion to just go back to J.I.H.B. as originally written without the blue sentence. And is there a second?
Is there a second?
So, if we vote?
The motion fails without a second, okay? So, what we have done is we've not approved this for first read, which means the previous policy is in place. The sense of the board, I think, by the vote, is that we should have a, have a new version of this come back with the authority of the principal to conduct the search stripped from this policy. That's the sense of the board. Is my sense?
Could you say that again?
I don't even know anymore.
The sense of the board, so we've, we've, we've said this, we won't pass this on first read, so that leaves the policy as it stands without the blue, right? Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, the sense of the discussion was whether we should, the principal should have the authority to conduct the search. That's what the discussion was about. And the sense, I think the sense of the, of the board, my sense, is that they would like to see that policy stripped from this, that line stripped from this policy. So, I think what we should do is direct the policy committee to come back with this again for first read, with that taken out.
I'm not, I'm still totally confused. Do you want it to be for it to say that only the police will be able to search? Is that what you're asking?
I think that's the sense of the board.
I would like to offer an opinion, since I haven't said anything on this yet. So, I, I do believe that Suzanne, that the high school principal should have the ability to search based on a reasonable suspicion.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with Kenny's reading of the current policy and the word that the, the principal will conduct a search of the automobile, that that actually removes discretion from Suzanne, and that she should have. I don't think that the principal should be required to conduct a search in the event that blah, blah, blah. I also am not satisfied that we have really established a legal basis for conducting, for operating this policy on town property. And I, the last paragraph starts with the term authorized personnel, and I have no idea in the context of this policy who authorized personnel are. So, it's not that I disagree entirely with the premise of the policy, but I don't think that we've done our, going back to my original comment at the beginning of the meeting about our policy development, this isn't good enough.
I would add that we, the last sentence talks about contraband, and there's no reference to how the contraband is to be preserved and held in accordance. It says with applicable administrative rules and procedures, but we really have no rules and procedures to do that either.
Right, right. This is the sort of thing that has the potential of miring the district in a legal quagmire by a, by a search gone wrong.
Okay. So, the status of it is that we've, we've not approved the change for first read, so the prior policy is in effect, but it, but there's a sense that this needs to go back to policy committee, because the board has dissatisfaction with the policy, along some of the lines of the discussion. So, so I think then it goes back to the policy committee. I don't see any other alternative.
And I'm going to go out on a limb, and following up with what Michael said, is I wonder, I worry about lots of ramifications and certainly our kind of legal jeopardy. I would like to propose that we suspend this policy until the board approves the appropriate replacement, because the policy is still going to be in effect going forward, and I'd like to just suspend this policy until we have.
Is that a motion?
Something, that's a motion.
Is there a second on that?
The motion is that I would like to suspend.
I don't think so.
Policy J.I.H.B. until we have an adequate replacement.
Is there a second? I hear no second, so that motion fails because of the lack of second. I think we should move on to the use of school buildings and facilities. Right? Okay?
I make a motion to approve policy K.F. use of school buildings and facilities for first read.
Okay. Moved by Denise. Is there a second? Checked by Brian? Discussion?
I don't think that the policy as provided reflects the discussion that we had two weeks ago.
Yeah, I don't either.
I agree.
In what way, Michael?
The crux of the discussion two weeks ago was about establishing equity between different users of district facilities, and the, all the change here does is clarify the superintendent's latitude to deviate. The R that's in place right now is directly against what we discussed last week, and defines groups that should be exempted from paying for facility use that is inconsistent with the discussion last week as well.
All right. May I make a statement?
Denise?
So, the one thing that we, I would say is that we determine if we charged an hourly rate, you would have to charge Oyster River Youth Association $35,000 a year, which obviously they could not afford, or else you would have to reduce the hourly charge to something like $3 an hour, in which case everyone on the entire seacoast would be wanting to use our facilities. So, we said, there's something about economy of scales, and that the big users are basically, it's economy of scales, they're using it for many, many, many hours, and the only change that we made was we agreed that both groups were, they were apparently not in the same category, and we determined that they should be in the same category. And that's basically why we decided we couldn't go with an hourly charge, because there was just no way to make it affordable for the two groups that are using it for hundreds of hours, and yet still have a reasonable cost for any other group.
So, can I assume, based on your description of the discussion, that we now understand what the actual district cost is? Has that been discovered?
We were able to put together the, so far, the exact usage of maximum velocity in terms of lights, custodians, and field use, and we're in the process of doing the same for ORYA.
So, what I'm getting at is, in order for the district to determine that we are either not profiting from or subsidizing private third-party entities by opening the facility, we need to know what our actual cost is that we're incurring by making the resource available. So, in other words, if we were to, at the end of the school day, at the end of the final school district activity of any given day, we were to close the facilities and not allow any other third-party group to use it, what, would we, would we not incur certain costs, right? So, in other words, I understand the custodial issue, like on weekends, we don't have coverage scheduled on weekends. If we open a gym on a weekend, we need to bring in custodians. What is that cost?
Sure. If we let no one use our facilities, our costs don't change. Our costs are fixed, unless we turn on the lights, which is an extra cost. So, the field doesn't cost us anything on a day-to-day basis, the gym doesn't cost us anything, unless you decide to start, you're really kind of building out some model that every five years you re-sand the gym, and therefore, we're going to start charging, incurring that cost. I think that the answer to your question, Dan, is our costs are, are a constant, whether we lease or don't lease, because that's part of our operating budget.
Okay.
So, the reason that we charge is because the market charges, and that gets back, it's not so much about the use of a facility as much as it is to make sure that the district's taxpayers are compensated for the use of a facility based on what the market is charging for profit groups.
Yep.
And then, you know, Tom asked me to investigate what districts charge for nonprofit groups, and so we started doing that process. But I don't know exactly, beyond saying that our costs are constant, other than when we turn on the lights, what it, what you're trying to ask me to do in relation to the fixed cost of a facility.
So?
Because all of the fixed costs are covered by the taxpayer, and so what you try to do is recoup some of those taxpayer dollars.
Well, if our costs are fixed, then we don't, we don't want to then be in a position where we're profiting from these community-based nonprofits.
We're not profiting from anything. We're just charging a market value for the use of our, our facilities. So, it's not like a profit. I mean, it goes back, so say, last year, all of last year, we collected $32,000 across the district, whether it's the elementary schools, high schools, whatever. All of that money gets, to date, gets put into our undesignated revenue fund and gets carried over into the taxpayers.
Okay.
So, it's, so that, that fund isn't making any profit, it's just being returned, because it's, it's not an anticipated revenue.
So, when I say profit, what I'm saying is, if we're collecting revenue from third parties by opening the facilities beyond the scheduled district activities of any given day.
Right.
That's money that we would not otherwise collect.
That's right.
Were we to just lock the building and say, "We're done."
Correct.
So, maybe profit's not the right word, but it's revenue.
It's, it's revenue.
Right. So, I think maybe it's better to go back to the original issue. The reason I asked for this to come forward, when I discovered that we actually weren't consistent with how we were assessing fees.
Well, I would argue we have been consistent in assessing fees, except for this most recent issue, where we negotiated with two heavy users to make it affordable for both of them to be able to use our facilities.
Okay. So, we have been in violation of policy, because we do not have a fee schedule that has been approved by the board.
Which happens at our budget hearing every year. This went through, this was in front of the board last year, the fee schedule. The policy was in front of the board.
The policy came before the board, but the fee, but there were many questions around the fee schedule. Remember, I asked for a meeting so we could?
Yeah, and we've been addressing those, as you know. We've been working through all of those questions.
So, you're saying the board took a vote to approve the fee schedule?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that.
But that's what the policy calls for.
So, in the time I've been here as superintendent, we have voted on this fee schedule. The last time we did it was, I was asked to address what the market values were for the use of the facilities. That was not last year.
Okay.
But it has occurred in front of this body, and those fees that are there were established by the board.
So, revisions as listed on the current fee schedule are September of 2018, April of 2019, May of 2019. I don't recall our board picking any votes.
I'm not arguing that. What I'm saying is the fee schedule as it exists was approved by this body.
So, the fee schedule that currently says, "ORCSD Community Nonprofit Yearly Flat Fee" to be established was?
No, that was not, because that was both.
But this is what I'm saying. You're telling me that this is approved, but it's not approved.
What I'm saying, I'm also, I guess what I'm doing is reacting to blanket statements that we're not in compliance. We're not in compliance with that one issue, but in terms of that fee schedule, that fee schedule was established by the board, and it's what we've been implementing. So, one issue of the fee schedule, we're not in compliance, but everything else, we have been.
Okay. So, the column for ORCSD Community Nonprofit, which is crossed out, and $150 for the turf field, and $75 for the lights, which is crossed out, that was approved by the board?
I don't know, I don't even know why that was crossed out.
And this is my point. This is my point. We don't know. We don't know.
I understand, but I just want to make sure that everybody knows that there's nothing untoward or?
I'm not suggesting there is.
I know you're not, but people hear it, and they think, "Oh, well, you know."
So, what I'm trying?
Because you brought it forward as a rumor, and I've been trying to address that as transparently as possible.
What I'm trying to get at is that what we most, what I believe we most urgently need is a coherent fee schedule that the board can approve, so that the administration has the resource to work for.
100% agree. 100% agree.
Okay. So, that's why I was surprised when I got the packet for this meeting and didn't see a fee schedule, because that, that is the crux of the issue with policy compliance on this.
Because Tom added an additional piece to the equation, which was, can you investigate what nonprofits are paying? And we hadn't done that. I just got that email literally today, and so I needed to do that work before I bring it back to you.
I think, I think what my question is, Dan, see, it seems that you have two tasks going forward, just see if I get this right, okay? One is to establish a fee for nonprofits that is, I think, more consistent with our costs than the current fee structure, because certain of those fees seem out of line.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, to, my, my email, what I thought is like, can you talk to Jim Rizicki and say, "Okay, if somebody uses a field, what is, what is the cost of it? I mean, if somebody stays after for school, you know, is there a janitorial cost? I mean, so that it, it matches costs, and some of those fees seem to me, maybe wrongly, not, not out of line." So, we need to kind of review that, that's one. And then, two, I think we have to decide as a board whether it makes sense to have wholesale fees for massive use, users. And it seems to me, you can make an argument against it, because you can make an argument, say, "It should be a multiple of each single use," which could be complex, but in a way more logical, or you could say, we could say, you know, have like a wholesale rate that we trust the administration to negotiate, and that that be, you know, communicated to us. I mean, that could be argued both ways. I think personally, I think that it makes sense to have wholesale rates, because then you're not checking each particular use. Now, that's something I think we have to, so, we have to make a call on that, and that has to be in policy. Would you agree, kind of, those are the two things?
I agree, but I think, I think the Policy Committee deserves greater clarity on what the board's intent is and what we would like to see back. And I, so, I, so, the second, the second point that you raise, I think, is an unresolved one, which is, I think there's division on the board around the two basic concepts of how to approach this, which is, it, does it need to be a per utilization rate that is consistent across the board, or does the flat fee approach work?
Yeah.
My position has been that you are guaranteeing inequity if you, if you apply a flat fee, because there's no statistical way to assume that any organization will have exactly the same utilization of the resource as another. The only way to ensure equity is that if every single third party uses the resource in exactly the same way, which is just, it's beyond improbable.
Okay.
That was, um, go ahead. Do you want to go first, Denise?
So, um, I, to me, I, I thought that was what we were to address at policy, and I was concerned that, kind of, that set of that flat fee, again, it's policy, and I would like to see kind of a basis for where that number comes from, as opposed to a number just kind of randomly assigned. And I think it goes to Denise, I think he made a very valid point, if we're charging $2 or maybe $3 is what you said, to use the field, then everybody's going to want to use it. But, we do have criteria that determines pecking order, but the same reason why you're saying maybe an outside group would want to use it for $2, we're now incentivizing a group that we're giving a flat fee to just pile on and do as much as they can, and keep doing as much as they can, because there's no additional cost, whether they use it for, you know, 100 hours a year or 1,400, they're getting that same flat fee. So, again, to me, policy is to take randomness and to give specific guidance, and through that guidance, we're hoping to create what we think is equity, and I agree, I don't think any of us feel we need to make profit off of this, and I agree, Denise, with you and with Dr. Morse, we don't want to put in, in order, burden on some of our youth programs that do wonderful services, but I just think criteria, and that includes pricing, needs to be very transparent.
Denise?
We, when we built the fields, we said it was going to be open to the community. If you start charging a group that uses it for as many hours as Oyster River Youth Association, and my understanding is now this maximum velocity, use it, and you start charging them by the hour, you are going to price them out, and they won't be able to use it at all. And then, that goes back to saying, "In the community, we said the, our groups could use it, and now, we're saying they're not going to be able to, because it's just going to be unaffordable for them." You know, and then, they'll go elsewhere. And then, so, it's just, you know, I think, it's not, and we talked about this in policy, and Jim Rizicky was there, that there hasn't been any issues with, like, blocking groups out. If anybody has an issue, they come and they talk and they work it out. They, they talked about, one of the things they did eliminate was that ability to just, like, reserve hours and hours, and then, not really, you know, just in case they needed them or whatever, and that's been all tightened up, as Jim, and I wish Jim was still here to be able to explain it, because he explained it to Policy Committee. Some things have been tightened up, and basically are saying, "Look, if there's another group that comes forward and they want to use our fields, you know, that's okay, we're going to talk, we're going to work it out, we'll figure it out." But, if you start charging these groups that have been using them, using our fields for hundreds of hours and trying to charge them per hour, they will not be able to use our fields, they will have to find else, they will have to go elsewhere.
Yeah.
So, actually, I talked to Andy yesterday about this very thing. The first thing that came up is there, currently, there is enough field space for everybody. And, to your point about, like, the, the problem is, is there's no formalized mechanism to protect people from being blocked out. So, if, and what, Andy said it, is like, as long as everybody is nice, and we all come and sit down in the same room, and we work things out, then it can work out. And the, the, the point he gave is, like, with his regular coaching staff, everybody wants to use the turf field. So, he sits down at the beginning of the year, he talks to his staff, and then, he says, "This is how it's going to be." And so, my concern right now is if, and Andy agreed with me, is like, when you do policy, you don't know what's coming forward in the future, and that's what I alluded to two weeks ago. I don't want to have you name sport X that's going to come forward, say, "Hey, we want to use the field," and it's been boxed out. So, the way this is currently done, there's nothing written in policy that formalizes that protective mechanism where you, I mean, again, really, it should be at the beginning of each season, you make the large stake, we know who the large stakeholder, you have to sit down and formally do that, that needs to be placed in the policy. That protects the, that protects the equity of the field uses, that's the first thing that I really want to see. Again, I, the last thing I want to see is, like, you name it, this other sport comes to us and said, "You know what, Oyster River has, has boxed us out, they've discriminated against our sport." I don't want to do that. So, I think we need to have a protective clause in there that's formalized in policy that prevents that. In terms of, like, the cost, okay, so, if you do pickleball during the day, the janitors are here, they're going to clean up the, they're here anyway, that's the existing thing. The weekend, that's not the case. If, if I come here and I'm using the, the facilities on the weekend, that has to be cleaned up Monday, because that's the workspace of the classroom. So, that is a different animal. So, when you do a flat fee, if I'm using 80% of my flat fee is during the weekday, that's one thing, if 80% of it's during the, or the weekday, that's one thing, if it's 80% during the weekend, that's a completely different...
The custodial is separate, so, if they have to have a custo, like, weekends, the custodial charge is on top of that flat fee. So, they, they, the, any charges, any additional charges that the district is incurring is being paid for by the team.
But, that needs to be formalized in policy, which it's not. So, we're being asked to approve stuff without the things that we need to understand what we're approving. So, it's like, I, I can't vote for this, because you have, the other work isn't done. So...
Well, I think that part of it is, that the clarity of the discussion has been kind of, I mean, tonight, I'm beginning to get some very specific things that people are saying they want in the policy. The last discussion was about the fee schedule and making sure that I was in compliance with the policy. So, that's how I, that's what I left for full ass...
Yeah, I mean, I tried to say, I, the fee structure creates inequality, and I'm trying to, and that's what I'm trying to address. When I was trying to bring up, when you, when you form a flat fee, you form an incentive to block out as much as you possibly can. It takes away, actually, the planning of the organization that we don't want to take away, because you really want them to think, "You know what, this costs us extra money, so, we want to use our fields judiciously." And that's not what's happened. So, the only thing that really protected this la, and again, a classic example of the blockout occurred with Rachel from Parks and Rec. She went to go use the middle school, and like, it had been blocked out for three months, and it had prevented her, and that really is, was unfortunate. So, so, again, there needs to be a protective mechanism that protects the equity of all users, that doesn't exist currently. It's informal that Andy said, "Well, okay, I'll have people come in and talk," but that needs to be formalized, the mechanism that you really do that.
Can I just raise a question, though? I get the idea of equity, but, and I go to Denise's concern, that, you know, an organization like Oyster River Youth Association, and I understand the controversies that are running around there, but the, you know, this is primarily used by people in this community, taxpayers, who, you know, who would not want to be, see their fees to Oyster River be doubled or tripped...
I'm not asking, in growing places, I'm...
Can I finish?
Go ahead.
So, so, I mean, whatever, however you, however you figure it out, whether you figure out it's a multiple, if, if the effect of that is, to go back to Denise's point, to triple or quadruple or octuple the amount that Oyster, that you, that, that group plays, that, that concerns me.
Can I stop you?
Sure.
Because you're, you're just using Oyster River, I'll take you to Growing Places. Growing Places is a nonprofit that provides a community service that's a bare-bones operation. Do I want to hurt them? No. I, in fact, I had this conversation with them this morning at Celebrate Durham, the very same thing. I just want to make sure that Growing Places is a large blocker of time at, at Moheramet. I, and I want them to work, that protective mechanism I'm putting in there is like, what if another group comes along and wants to use some of Moheramet, and they don't get boxed out? Under the current system, they do. And it, so, again, I'm not looking whether, while we focusing, while we're focusing on an ORYA, that is not a valid, let's look at the large user is a better way, term to use. We don't want the large users to block out potentially small users that come in. And so, you need to put, that's the equity component.
Okay.
All right, so, I, again, I, I don't want to triple the fees in any way. In fact, what I've said even as a Durham Town Councilor is, in my mind, the people pay a lot of taxes here in these communities, and what we really are looking for is, we want to have good resources, good facilities, that we provide them at very low cost, because it's a service to the community. So, that's the goal to do, but you cannot exclude the equity of other groups by saying, "We'll charge too much money." That's, that goes against the very grain, I think, of what we're trying to accomplish.
And very, very quickly, to me, it's, we're talking about opposite ends of the spectrum. We're talking about a flat fee that's just pulled out of wherever, and we're talking about an hourly fee, and I, I think there are problems with both, but we're discounting that we can be creative, and we, and I don't think any of us want to increase the cost that these very valuable community groups are paying, but I think we could be creative and come up with a scheme that really meets every player that is coming forward now, and that we anticipate coming forward, and that's the point of policy. I, I don't think we should get ourselves boxed into, it's either A or B, and that there's no middle ground to think of being creative.
So, just a couple of points. One I made earlier, which is, when we discuss the formulation of a policy, we, we really should avoid talking specifically about organizations, employees, because the policy has to stand on its own, the policy has to function despite, you know, what we think of a particular teacher, principal, organization, what have you. And then, the second point is, you know, the idea that we would necessarily be burdening any current user is, is a concept I think, certainly, I would want to avoid, but I, we can't say that definitively we would be doing that, because we don't know what our actual costs are. We, they might be paying too much, because we, we simply don't know. We haven't done that calculus to figure out what it is that the district is, is spending to open the resource to third parties, okay? And, you know, I've said it before, and I think it's worth saying again, our, my goal in this policy is to see something that retains the district's facilities as a community resource, because the community has invested so much in the resource, but to establish a protocol that ensures that those users of the resource necessarily pay the same rate. And that the, when we formulate a budget and put that out to the voters, we don't say, and by the way, some of this is going to go to cleanup after, you know, groups that come in and use our gyms. That's not in our purview to budget for and ask the taxpayers for money for. We, the money that we get approval to spend from the taxpayers has to be spent on district programs, and cannot be diverted to supporting these third-party programs. Inasmuch as we want the third parties to use the resource and continue to flourish, we can't be subsidizing them. So, that's why we really need to understand what our actual costs are, and, you know, hopefully, it's a very low number that we can, you know, hopefully, maybe even save them money.
So, Jim, and I, I, again, we probably should just have suspended this discussion, because Jim isn't here, because he could have, he came, when he came to policy, one of the things he said, the amount that is currently being charged, the flat fee, wasn't a number pulled out of thin air, it was based on the usage of the turf field, which will need to be replaced in 10 years, so, it was based on the actual cost of what it will be, and the percent of time that that group is using it versus, the school uses it way, way, way more, I think he said something like 80, 85% of the use was school, and the rest was outside group. So, the number wasn't pulled out of thin air, it was based on that, just to say that, the first point I wanted to make. The second point is just, again, you're right, policy shouldn't just be addressing one group or another group, and to me, this policy is a generic policy that speaks to globally what we're trying to achieve. And, and to me, I mean, we don't want to start putting so many details in there that it becomes unwieldy and burdensome. You know, right now, it says, "We're going to approve the schedule of fees," and that superintendent or designee may grant a waiver, and then, we did add the line about, "May adjust the fee charged when doing so, will report out to the next board meeting." Now, maybe we, if people feel like they want to have more control over that, could say, you know, with the approval of the board or something like that. We don't want to start getting into so many specifics in the policy, you know, to, it is only, you know, it just becomes so unwieldy to be able to actually implement it. The rest of it is in the R document.
Can I just make a quick point? I, I understand that, Jim, there was, there was thought put into the number established for the flat fee, but in, because it was presented to two organizations, in order for it to be equitable, he would have to have determined that both organizations had exactly the same utilization of the resource, and that's just not statistically possible. So, I mean, i- i- in some way, it is arbitrary, and I understand it's a simpler mechanism, but it becomes more complicated when you have to start establishing flat fees for different organizations that have different utilizations and different types of burden put on the district. The simpler mechanism is to figure out what we actually spent and apply it in a consistent way.
What we will spend in this case? So, this particular asset has a life expectancy, so, it's easy for us to calculate what its 10-year cost would be. Other facility, other parts of the facility are just embedded in the overall operation of the building. That's where I get, I struggle with your concept of figure out what things cost, is the, the, the field has a unique cost that we can define, whereas, the gymnasiums across the district would exist regardless, and I go back to what Al was saying in terms of, you know, the philosophy that, you know, these schools are community assets is something I hold dearly, and I want community members to use the facilities, whether it's on behalf of children, or whether it's recreation for adults. I mean, I, I want the buildings to be used. On the other hand, I don't want the district to incur unique costs associated with that use. So, you know, when there's damage done, for example, windows broken, people are charged. If there's cleanup that has to occur, people are charged. So, you know, I, I try to be respectful of the idea that these buildings should be used, I believe it totally with all my being. At the same time, I don't think the taxpayers should be incurring unique costs associated with those uses, and, and going down Al's thought about how much people pay for taxes. I think that that's part of the way that we say to the community, "Thank you," than pickleball that happens every evening in this, in this building. You know, we just, I, I love seeing that when I walk by, because it's saying that the, these community members, you know, know this building, and they're respecting it. I love seeing the kids on the fields, the little ones, when they're outside of the school setting. I think that's, you know, it's kind of, it makes me feel very proud to see those kids play across the street from, you know, at Madbury. And so, the philosophy behind this is a dead-on philosophy. I, I think that, you know, as we have been doing for a year, we've been pounding away at this policy, trying to make it better, and I will continue to pound away on it to try to make it better still, but... try to make it better still, but it, it is a hard policy to nail down, largely because it, it isn't an exact science.
So just, just to sort of play off your, your thinking, I would be very supportive, if we looked at a particular resource that's used by third parties and we cannot identify any additional costs to the district, I would love to be able to charge zero, because...
Well, that would be a discussion for the seven of you to have. You know, that's, that'll be, that would be part of the fee structure. When I started down the path that Tom pointed me on, because I did already begin to do that, there are school systems who don't charge. So, you know, I can provide data by the, you know, that's why I didn't want to get to the data prematurely. You know, if I jump into the data, that's just going to be a data discussion. I need to know what's happening in the market, I need to know what's happening in other school systems. So we did the market analysis, great, it's competitive, but, you know, this whole idea of not charging, I didn't, I, I needed to investigate completely. So when we get this thing back, obviously, there will be structural changes inside the policy. And a lot of the, Al's ideas that he says not in the policy are actually how we function, so that's absolutely critical to do. I mean, the idea of meeting with like parties, that's exactly what we do. And so, you know, getting that language in, so it's, tonight's conversation has gotten a lot more specific than previous conversations, and, and yet, I'm pretty confident that when I come back with some more revisions, it'll spark additional conversation, and we'll probably struggle through this for a bit until we get it to the place where, you know, the majority of the board is comfortable. So I, I do think this has been a year-long work in progress, and it clearly still needs to be a work in progress, and we'll continue to pound away at it until you guys are, are comfortable with it as a board.
Okay. Ready to go forward?
Do you want to pull back?
So I will withdraw my motion.
Okay. Motion's withdrawn, and there'll be continued work with the policy.
Yeah, I just don't think, right now, I mean, these are big substantive changes. I don't think we were ready to move it forward. Let's get this in, then you can bring it forward to first read, and then we can work on it. But there was just too much missing right now in this policy to move it forward, I think.
Okay. Committee updates?
I already gave mine.
You already gave it?
So, I mean, again, the, the only thing I'll throw out there with the wellness is that, you know, what came forward is that, I know people have asked for the report, but let us just finish it. I mean, I'd rather do a good report than to rush the report. So we, we're meeting again in, in two weeks, and then we'll get it together, and then we can talk to Todd or whatever, and we're comfortable, and we throw it by you, we'll just bring it forward, I think.
Okay. Other committee updates? No? Okay. A public comment?
Bevy Cato from Madberry. This whole rate sheet thing makes me even more confused. Last summer, or last March, my son was going on an IEP. I said I'm going to get a tutor to help him too. He, because Dr. Morris was able to get tutoring at school at no charge, twice a week, until it changed. Dr. Morris, you called me back in your office, and you said you didn't have the discretion to do that.
Right.
I'm so confused. I don't get why I paid $625, and it sounds like you did have discretion.
Nope, I presented that to the board. There's a rate sheet right there where the board approved it.
Well, I'm still confused, I'm still disappointed. I'm glad you're dealing with the bigger fish, but I think the parents are being dismissed here.
Closing actions, so...
I'm sorry, sorry. From the public.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I was, I just made some notes for the various conversations that went on tonight. I was thinking for the facilities use, I don't understand why an hourly rate with a quantity discount kind of wouldn't work, so the people buying thousands of hours wouldn't have to pay the same amount as the people just buying a few hours, but they would still have to pay for the space and would have an incentive not to waste it. So that was my comment on that one. On the principal searching cars, I thought the problem was not the, that the standard for the principal search, but the requirement that she report what she sees. I think, and I don't know what the law says, but I think the principal should have discretion to report, and then we could let her search with a lower standard. That, that would be my compromise. On that one, I have a, I have an agenda from over here, and under the policies, it, it has a, basically a blank for all these for first read, and it also says something about ADB for second read, which I'm not sure you guys did.
That is an error, obviously, Dean, sorry about that.
Okay. And my last thing is, I'm a member of the Lee Sustainability Committee, and we put in to use Mast Away for a fix-it workshop, I think on November 2, which was approved, and I was at the last meeting, and I heard we got a bill for, I, my recollection was $260, which I'm not sure is in accordance with the policies being discussed.
The town committee, Dean?
It's the Lee Sustainability Advisory Committee to the Lee's electorate.
We're not using the kitchen.
We're using the gym. But it's a Saturday.
The request came for the kitchen use and the house.
I don't, I don't think, for the fix-it, this is a fix-it workshop, I don't, I don't think there was, okay, well, anyway, I will let you guys work it out, I'm just telling you.
Sorry, Dean. So we'll have a manifest meeting, just the two of us, I think, on the 30th, and then board workshop on the 31st, and the next meeting is on the November 6th, so go.
Could I ask a question to follow up on Dean? Is it possible for us to look into the legality of what Dean proposed whereby a search could be performed, but there's not the automatic...
Yeah. Public and school employees are required by, by law to report, so I don't think that, although I understand where Dean was coming from, I don't think that's legally possible.
Okay. Thank you. Have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Dan. All is in favor? Seven in favor. Your adjourn.